I am, we are, this is Norwood. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the latest installment of I Am Norwood. Today's guest, longtime Norwood resident and fixture Murray Bass. Murray, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How's everything going?
Thank you for the opportunity of being a guest.
Certainly, I've been here about 10 years and you've been in a fixture at virtually everything Norwood that I've been to out in public during that time. So I'm glad we've had the opportunity to do this today. How long have you been in Norwood? I just said I'm 10 years this year, so.
My wife, Joanne, and I moved to Norwood in January of 1986. And we moved to Pimaon Road.
Okay.
It's what, 34, 35 years?
Tell me about Norwood at that time that you moved in.
Norwood at that time was a lot more rural. Now, for a difference, I have to wait three or four minutes to get out of my driveway on Pimaon Road. It was, at that time, Pimaon was a two-lane country road. The downtown area was mainly dominated by cost cutters. And there was a CVS store, a few local bagel stores, Ronnie's was still there in the plumbing supply place. But and there were a lot of lots for sale, a lot of homes for sale. The East Hill was, was beginning to be built, but a lot of lots sales. So population, I would imagine, would have been around 28, 100 people at that time. It's now in 30-plus years, more than, more than doubled. Traffic has seriously increased. And I think the town government has kept up with the growth, modernizing the Borough Hall, building a new community center slash police center, building a playground for the kids. And years developing Livingston Street for 10 or 12 years. That was the really the main focus. How to build Livingston Street into a a nice residential, commercial shopping center that not only would attract Norwood residents, but people from outside the community. And how to, very important, control the traffic on Livingston Street, which was becoming very heavy. One of the reasons it was the entryway to the Palisade Mall up in Nahak and other businesses growing north and south there. So I would think, yeah, about 12 years, everybody was involved. And we were off to a very strong start with the Livingston Street redesign. And then the bottom fell out with Davies running into personal financial problems. And we sat dormant for many years, which frustrated everybody. And the finger was pointed at who else but the elected officials in that. It's always their fault, but fortunately, we lived through it and the jewels are starting to shine. With regard to the school system, that's really something that we can be very, very proud of. One of the reasons why young couples with young children, such as Joanne and I selected Norwood, was because of the school system. And they've remained at a very high status and still responsible for attracting young couples and children to Norwood.
Well, you touched on two areas that might be a little, might have to take out of sequence just because you've raised them. But I know are big components of your history here. When did you first get on the zoning board?
I would say around 2008.
Okay, now, was the Livingston, Livingston Street project already in its infancy by then? Or is that one of the first big things that you worked into?
Just beginning. Prior to that, we had for years no zoning board. And I was on the planning board.
Okay.
And then the mayor decided that there were so many cases coming in for side yard development. Everybody was building homes that, again, we needed a Board of Adjustment, the zoning board, to handle at that time all of the new building that was going on. And although we have not that many cases coming before us, at that time, we had two or three side yard adjustments, encroachments on existing property that we were justified in, in having a Board of Adjustment.
What have been some, what have been some of the large events, large rulings you've had to make on zoning since you've been involved?
Yeah, I would think the largest was the Livingston Street involvement. We also had cases with regard to building up on McClellan Street. There were some developers that came in and wanted to put other long-term care facilities up in that area. And Barry really helped us because it was planned dedicated to what they call laboratories. And some of it was non-buildable. So that was, that was a major event for us, again, along with Livingston Street. And then the majority, I think, were encroaching on within the 15 feet side yards of of new decks or air conditioners being put. That's what most of it. And we represented the the townspeople and then enforcing the laws. And I think so far, the current Board of Adjustment has done an excellent job.
First one I remember seeing before the board and full disclosure for anyone watching, I'm a member now. But it was the Darco Farms discussion back in, what, 2013, maybe? What do you remember about that? What led to that?
That was another important event that happened. And a lot of the neighbors were very concerned that it would affect their property values. A big part of the discussion was the increased traffic to Pan Road, which is a two-lane road. And very important that that development now is built on a hill slope. And where does that water go? The natural drainage of the water. And looking at shots that drainage went as far as Livingston Street and Broadway and, and could have been partly responsible for Livingston Street and Hudson Avenue flooding all of the time because of the water, the water drainage. So that was a very important. And also, the school system was taken into consideration and the number of kids. So you're sitting on the board, you, you really have to think of many different aspects of a new development going in, more than just traffic and drainage and the school system. The people that lived on the streets opposite were very concerned about the traffic. Also, so I know we, we made the right decision. And the people are very happy in the in that particular area now. So it turned out.
Some nice looking houses there now. It's certainly less numerous than I remember being discussed, which I have trouble visualizing today. Pull that one off, but.
Have to drive a little bit further for our Christmas trees, but.
Yep, yep. Going back to the, more towards 1986, give, give me the chronology of you and your wife's involvement in town.
Well, Joanne, because of her son Alex, was the first to get involved. She, she left her job when Alex was born. She was a stay-at-home mom who had a lot more energy than a stay-at-home mom. And she became friendly through preschool with a lot of the parents that were sending their kids off to Norwood Public. And so she got involved in various groups and eventually became the president of them people. I really, because of my travels to China and working in the city, did not get involved with the town until a group formed a Republican Club with the main purpose of changing the then current administration of Norwood. It took us a while, but we were successful in our endeavors and our mission. And it became a more open community, more open society. We welcomed people to attend the mayor and council meetings and started a lot more, like Norwood Day, for example, started a lot more events that brought the, brought the community together.
Okay, okay. When was the first Norwood Day? Do you remember, as you said here? Figure I'd ask, because I know you photographed all of them. I just am not sure when the first one was.
Another important feature or subject that I got involved in was the Norwood 5K Run.
Oh, yes. Tell us about that. I know a lot of people.
16 years ago, someone's in make it. 1990, we, we started that. And there were a group of runners and that began, I was running at that time. And hey, how about a Norwood 5K? And we worked on it for a year and successfully got it off the ground. And that's been a major event. It had nothing to do with the borough. We were a ad hoc committee. We rented ourselves money out of our own pockets to to fund it. And it was a lot of fun. And it helped bring a lot of people together. Unfortunately, with the pandemic last year, we did not have the event. We have one in 2021 remains to be seen. It was more successful than, than it wasn't successful, but we just had a very hard time getting people over the years to volunteer to pour ranges and lay out the tables. We had a hard time getting, getting volunteers for this, for this committee, so. I am very proactive. I hope we can start it up again. We were one of the few, I think Closter was the first.
Centipoly has one too, I think, right?
Yeah. Then Harrington Park came along and Jeff Pavel, who was with us as a resident at the time, then moved to Power and started his own power hour 5K race there. So a good part of my energies in, in addition to the committees and the Republican Club was a director of the Norwood 5K. And maybe we can get it started again.
Had some fun volunteering with it. And I should note that their shirts make up a lot of my winter wardrobe these days.
I sleep in them every night. I've got every.
They're good for that. And they're good for going out in double layers with a sweatshirt on top, so. I'm happy to have volunteered for a few years because of that alone.
I remember.
So how did you get involved with, as I mentioned in the beginning, you, you, you're at a lot of the events to taking pictures of various goings on. How'd you get involved with that? And how long you've been doing that?
In traveling so much. And you need to find a relaxation source. Enjoyed photography. And one day I was introduced to the editor of the Pascat Press. And the timing was right because the Pascat Press wanted to expand into the Northern Valley. They're in the Pascat Valley, which is Westwood and Montvale and Hillsdale. And they wanted to come east from Rockly South through Englewood, starting newspapers. And it was just a matter of timing. I was there at the right time. They gave me a lot of assignments to do, a lot of parades, a lot of town events. And I really enjoyed it. So in addition to my work and nights, holidays, I would go out and take pictures. And that was also a very strong part of my community involvement, not only in Norwood, but the entire Northern Valley.
Any Norwood events in particular stand out as memorable ones that you had the opportunity to photograph?
They were, they were equal to. And I, I enjoyed Memorial Day and and the Fourth of July. But Englewood had a lot of events and Tenafly, a lot of events. And so they, they kept us busy for many years. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, only the Pascat Press is still being printed. Valley Press had to stop because of the lack of retail advertising. So I still work for the Pascat Press in the, in the Westwood Hillsdale area.
Okay. You mentioned July 4th. Norwood has a, usually has a pretty big July 4th, normal years. Was, was that, was that going on when you came here in 86? Or is that later? As that got started?
You know, I don't. It might have been. I don't remember that, that detail. It's always been privately funded. And you know, I don't remember. But in the height of it, going back five or six years ago, you couldn't get a seat at Kennedy.
Crazy, yeah.
They came down from Rockland County, came from Essex County. They came from all over because Kennedy Field really is the only field that can sit that amount of people and watch the fireworks. So it was advantageous. And then we went a step further and brought in musical, musical events. And another event that we should get back once we're allowed to do it again. Norwood Day, another event. I was never on the planning committee, although I took pictures of it. And the mayor has always done a great job in attracting events and bringing in thousands of, of people. It's not a money-making situation. It's just, hey, look at us. We're Norwood. Norwood proud and look what we can do.
Right, right. Now, 1986, from my math, puts you in at least three different mayoral administrations. Am I doing the math right?
No, just, just just two. And then went to.
Kaplan and then Mayor Barso is in there.
And then we, and Gus fought it out to the bloody end. Mike, who was a council person whose job was changing the light bulbs on Livingston Street.
That's my, my captain, you mean?
Yeah, my captain. They gave him assignments like that, just to, just to keep him out of the mainstream. And then after Mike, it was, yeah, it was Jim, Jim Bossa. I think Jim lost. I remember. He lost running as a council person on the first go-round. It was a real tough battle to, to get us in there. He came in after the initial start of the Republican Club. Came in a few years after that and has done a an admirable job since then. And proud to heaven as mayor.
Okay, okay. I was gonna ask you, you said your, your wife had done time on the PTO as president or PTA?
PTA.
What were some of the big challenges in the school or, or many of the things?
One second.
Okay.
Joanne? Could you come here for a moment?
Make sure she's camera ready.
Paul Haberman was the sweetest you met.
I'm off duty for the next few minutes at least.
We have a couple of offices here in the house.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good. You?
Good. You have, you have beautiful daughters.
Oh, thank you.
That was such a beautiful card we got.
Explain what you're doing.
Okay. Briefly, since we are, since it is recording already, I, I'm doing a series of interviews right now. I'm titling I Am Norwood, where we're trying to get a oral history of the town, past and present and in between. And.
Where did I see that?
I, I, I put something up about it online.
On Facebook or something? Yeah, yeah. The Norwood Group. Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Matter of fact, sneak preview, I think the first one might go up this weekend that I recorded actually back in early December, probably. But, but yeah, I've been looking to take snapshots of different goings on at different times in town. And Murray had mentioned earlier that you were, you did a couple of stints as PTA president or PTO president. And I was asking when he called you, was what sort of highlights you remember about the school during your administration there?
Oh, my God. Our son was in the third grade maybe when I did this for a couple of years. It's always been a great school, I thought. And the teachers were great. And very responsive to things we wanted to do with them.
Okay.
You know, one of the things I did when I was the PTA president was I did a teacher feature. And I interviewed teachers and took, you know, and they presented me with some pictures from their lives. And I did put it up on a, like a pizza boat tag. And then it was on an easel as you came in the front door to the school. And that was Teacher of the Month or the Week, whatever it was. And that was a little more information about their lives that we wouldn't have known.
Right, right. I like that.
You know, the principal then was, you probably don't know, but Betty Johnson and Doc Rose. And, you know, different times, we had, we had a fair every October, October Fair, which was a really big event. And everybody participated, parents, kids, everybody, fundraising.
Were they doing the PTO carnival at the time also? Or is that a later thing?
With a PTO what? I'm sorry.
There's a PTO carnival, at least since we've been here. Is that a more recent?
No, no, that was, that was, we called it a fair. Okay, the carnival was a separate event. The fair was an autumn thing. And the carnival was usually, you know, not too long before school ended for the year. And it always used to be on the grounds of the Catholic school. But that was not a PTO event. That was, that was a Catholic school event. School was there. There was always a carnival. But then, you know, once they were gone, PTO took it over and tried to do what I think at Kennedy Field, right?
Yep, the last couple of years, they did it was at, it was at Kennedy Field by the front.
Yeah, yeah.
And since you're in the room, what do you remember about Norwood from when you first moved here in 86?
We, yeah, we're here 35 years. The thing I remember most was that it was very dark. Fort Lee. And I said, oh, my God, it's so dark up here.
We, we came from the city and started driving around here. I was like, where's the lights at night on certain streets?
You should have been here then. It was really dark.
Okay.
Country roads.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
Well, good luck with it. I think it's a great thing you're doing.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I learned some interesting things. And was inspired by the dedication of the basketball court to Mayor Derico. And some of the stories they were telling there, I was like, this is stuff that's some of us are never gonna hear, once these people are elsewhere or what have you. So it's one of many towns, but has a very interesting history in and of itself.
Town for sure, because every. This town for sure, because every other person you meet is somehow related to Dericle. They may not have the same last name, but it's it's quite a large family, so.
Right, right.
Very extended. All right, I've got to get back to work.
Thank you for stopping in.
You know, you might want to interview, that's a good point, Betty Johnson or Andy Rose. They could, they could tell you about the development of the school system.
Oh, okay.
They were responsible for twenty plus years they were in.
Okay.
In the in the school administration and probably could tell some uh very good stories.
Okay, uh tell me a tell me a random story or two you remember about Norwood, about your time here. It's a wide open question, but uh. Again, you're a man about town, so.
Yeah, yeah, I've uh I've been involved in uh in many projects, uh. A lot of them I enjoyed, what what really stands out in my mind. Uh the Norwood five K events, uh photographer taking pictures at the. All of the uh all of the parades and. We buried, you need to check me out on this.
Okay.
But we buried a time capsule.
You, okay, I never heard about that.
Run of. Borough Hall. I think in the year two thousand.
Okay.
Uh we had a parade. To celebrate. The year two thousand, took pictures and put in a lot of mementos. In the time capsule that's buried in. In in front, begin position, but it's buried somewhere. Uh in the front of the uh Borough Hall, you might want to uh, you might want to check that out.
Yeah, we may have people trying to dig it up after the, after we post this interview, but uh.
Right of the front door, if I remember correctly, there's a there's a time capsule in there.
Treasure hunt, boys and girls.
Again, uh. Taken the uh the shots from the parade and had put, it was on tape at the time.
Well, that's great. What, is there a year that's supposed to be dug up or is it just kind of?
I don't remember, but check on the time capsule.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that might be another story for you that very few people. Still around, remember, I think Barry can talk about it.
Right.
Mary Ann. But I don't think many people remember it, it might be worth the research of how long it's supposed to be in there. And if ever anybody remembers to dig it up.
Like I said, we we might be encouraging some people to do just that, just by talking about it today, so.
There really isn't one event, Paul, that stands out, I've just uh put my time in. A lot of different events, uh both political, both social. And what I got out of it was for me, that it satisfied me that. Uh I certainly enjoyed spending the uh time um to do it. And uh just a lot of memories and uh. And a lot of good enjoyment uh living here, no secret that Joanne and I are uh. Planning to move in uh probably the next few years to a.
Okay.
Warmer warmer climate.
That would make sense, that's understandable.
Yeah, we we have a lot of friends who live south and I think we're going to enjoy it, it's just a matter of. Winding up your involvement, what I do, I can live anywhere now with. Um everything's done on website, so it doesn't make any difference there. China of verboten, that's that's not gonna happen anymore, but through Zoom and. WhatsApp and other similar forms of communication.
Right, that's right.
Running the business from here and have uh responsible people in China looking after us, so. Things.
What uh close this out here, what would you tell people to look look to do and 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 uh. And be involved with in Norwood if they're coming in, say, this year?
I would I would think. That the best thing for someone to do is do exactly what Paul Haberman did.
Do too.
Went to meetings because he wanted to find out what's going on in the town. He took the time to attend a board of health meeting. To attend the mayor and council meetings. And a lot of other zoning board meetings and no one encouraged you to do it. You did it out of a sense of maybe uh uh responsibility, hey, this is. Where I move, this is where I'm paying my taxes.
Yep.
Here of my taxes going and Paul Haberman would show up at meetings, would answer questions. And when he ran for council, he was a natural. We did not have to reach out to Paul to say, hey, you wanna run? Paul wanted to get involved and if there is any. Um advice that I can give to people who want to get involved. This is your town, this is your school system, this is where you're paying your taxes. Show interest, get involved by attending the meetings. Whether it be the school board or the mayor and council and and uh and. And assume or take part in meetings, you don't have to be a councilman, but you could be. On many, many different boards and serve the town in that way.
Excellent. All right, I thank you for your time, I don't want to take all afternoon, but uh. Thank you for talking to me, like I said, you've been a fixture of most things uh Norwood since I've been here and uh.
Thank you.
I'm glad I've had the opportunity to 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 get to know you over these years and now uh some more people will ha- get that chance as well, so thank you again.
Uh my pleasure and thank you for inviting us.
Anytime, I will talk to you soon and hopefully uh if anybody has any questions after seeing yours, uh you you're welcome the chance to come back on.
Well, off the off the date, was there a council meeting last night?
Uh yes, there was.
I gotta get the schedule, we were.